The Network Advisory Council. This is just a work session, no business. We wanted to take the time to provide you with some training about the state budgeting process and the sources of funding that go into creating the budget that we use to support library development in the state. These are the dollars that are available for the NAC to help think about when we decide what kinds of priorities we want to support for the variety of different kinds of services that we offer. I asked Melissa Briggs, our central services manager, to join us today. She's the person in our agency responsible for helping us to prepare our budget and to analyze our budget and make financial recommendations. She is staff to the Commission's Finance Committee, who ultimately hears all of the financial recommendations and considers them ahead of any kind of Commission action. So Melissa, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I don't, I think I might be having internet connectivity issues, but if you guys can hear me, then I will go ahead.
Great, and Melissa, maybe we'll have other folks introduce themselves as well. So you know who you're talking to as well. She's frozen up a little bit. I hope she can hear us. Jody, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, Melissa. I am Jody Moore. I'm the Library Director of the Red Lodge Carnegie Library, and I sit on the NAC currently as the Chair.
Oh, nice to meet you, Jody.
Thank you.
And Susie?
I'm Susie McIntyre. I'm the Director of the Great Falls Public Library, and I am a member of the NAC.
Nice to meet you, Susie.
And Hanor?
I'm Hanor Bray. I'm the Director of Missoula Public Library and on the NAC.
Nice to finally meet you. I've heard lots about you.
And Jonna?
Hi there, Jonna Underwood. I'm the Director of the Sheridan County Library in Plentywood, and I'm also a NAC member.
Wonderful. Nice to meet you.
And Lauren?
I'm here.
Hi, Lauren.
Sorry. I have somebody in my office really quick. I'm going to put myself back on mute and finish this, and then I will, I'll still listen to you, though.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
And Dalton has joined us. Dalton is the Commission Rep for the NAC.
Hi, Dalton. Good morning, Melissa. Good morning, everyone.
There. And staff, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, especially Coley, recently joined us.
Hi, Coley. You are on our staff now, but I haven't met you in person. So I'm looking forward to our first in-person introduction, but it's nice to see you this morning.
Thanks, Melissa. Good morning, everyone. I'm so excited Hanor is on. I haven't seen you for such a long time, and Jody too. But Coley Bartow, in my first week of attempting to fill Joe Flick's shoes as the Continuing Education Coordinator at the State Library. It's great to be here. I'm just listening in to get reacquainted.
Okay.
Congratulations, Coley.
Thanks, Hanor.
Longtime NAC member.
I looked back in Aspen and since 1999.
That's fantastic. And Kara?
Good morning, everyone. I think we all know each other. Kara Urban, State Library.
It looks like Tracy's with us, too. Hi, Tracy.
Hello, Tracy with the State Library.
Hello, Tracy.
Genevieve is hosting. Thanks, Genevieve. I think that's everyone. Melissa, I think I'll turn it over to you unless there's anything else we need before we get started.
I don't think so. There's one more person joining. I'm not familiar with her face.
Hi, Mark. Mark, we're just doing introductions, Mark.
Oh, hello. Mark Wetherington, Bitterroot Public Library.
Hi, Mark. Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Okay, well, then I'll get started. I'll just give a brief introduction to myself. My name is Melissa Briggs, and I am usually working behind the scenes, so you don't see me as much. But I know a lot about the work that you all do. Just as a little bit of background, I have about 15 years of experience in finance and accounting. And before I came to the State Library, I was over in the Governor's Budget Office for several years. I've been at the State Library now for three and a half years. It's almost four years, which is impossible to believe. And so, and I'm obviously very happy here and love working with everybody at the library. And one of my, one of my dear friends, whenever I was thinking of applying for this job, she said, "You have to apply for that job. Librarians are the best people I know." And that's true. I didn't know that, but I'm so glad to have gotten to know all of you, and it is in fact true. So I am very lucky to be here and give you guys a brief introduction to the finances here at the State Library, and then we'll talk a little bit about the LSTA funding, which is more specific to the work that you all do. And then, just please, if you have questions or if I am saying something that you don't know what it is, then please speak up and let me know. I hope that this is a casual conversation today. And if I'm not catering to everybody's knowledge level about finances, then I want you all to speak up, because sometimes I get into government lingo and start saying acronyms that nobody knows what they're, what I'm talking about. So with that being said, I will... Oh, Genevieve, can you let me, let me drive, please?
Yes. Okay, you should be a co-host now.
So, let's see. Everybody can see the agenda here?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So we're going to talk about three things today. And like I said, I don't want to go into tons of detail because there's, nobody has enough time to do that anyways. I barely do. So we're going to go at a high level. We'll talk, we'll just do an introduction to our agency-wide budget. And then we'll talk a little bit about the IMLS funding, which is the Library and Services Technology Act, which you all are very familiar with. And then I'll just briefly talk about the legislative cycle and then how all of the timelines of all three of these work together. So the first thing I just want to go over, this is actually what we go over with our Finance Committee. I wanted to start with that. Just let somebody in. I don't know who it is.
It's okay, Sean.
Okay. So this is actually the document that we go over with our Finance Committee. So Dalton will be very familiar with it. The majority of this report is also posted online under our Commission materials. So if you ever get a hankering to go and look at numbers for the State Library, you can always do that on our internet site. But basically, when I'm starting to just show you our overall budget, I want to start at a really high level and make it really simple. So this is the chart I like to do that with. It doesn't give you a lot of detail, but it sort of just gives you a starting point of how big we are and what kind of funding that we have. So you can see that our, for this year, our total budget is $12 million, which is much larger than it has been in years past. Typically, our budget has been about $5 or $6 million. We have a lot of ARPA money right now, so that's inflating this amount temporarily. And then we also have had a very fruitful legislative session last year, and we had several new sources of funding that have increased our overall budget. Some of those are one-time onlys. We call that OTO money, which means that we only get it at one time for one purpose. And then if we would like to renew, we have to go through the legislative process again. And then some of those other fundings are permanent ongoing funds, such as the Montana Land Information Act funds, which are now in statute. So that increased fee will be coming to us in perpetuity. So now I'd like to just go into a little bit more detail without making the screen too big. I'm sorry if this is really small.
It's okay. It's a good size.
Okay, good. So this is the same budget that we were just looking at. You'll see that that total right there is the same, but there's a little more detail broken out here. On the top half of this chart, you can see all of our, this is broken out by expenditure category. So all of our personal services are on this top row here, and then our operating expenses are broken out down below. Across the top, you'll see what we call our work groups within the State Library. So this is, this is actually something that we recently changed to a different sort of accounting structure a couple of years ago. And so we call these our work groups, and it's just a way for us to further divide the, divide down and be able to identify certain costs by, by project type or work group even further. So across the top, you can see we have administrative, broken out, patron services, land information, consulting, statewide projects, and so on and so forth. The majority of the work that you all provide feedback on is, is located within our consulting work group and our statewide projects work group. And so you can, this is just another way for you to see how those expenditures are broken out by expenditure type and work group. And along the bottom, I have the same information by work group, except I'm just breaking out what funding type is paying for it. We have several different main funding sources at the State Library. The first that I want to talk about is general fund. And so general fund is the most valuable fund that we have because it can be spent on a multitude of things. It's not specific to one project or initiative that the legislature wants us to spend that on. So the majority, a lot of our money for general fund is spent on administrative services just because there, we're, our hands are tied a little bit more on the other funding that we get as far as being able to spend that on administrative services. The second main type of funding that we have is the Montana Land Information Act, and that is a recollection fee that is collected through local governments. On, and it's, you'll have to help me, Jenny, is it $2 per page? $2 per page that is collected at the local government level and then divvied up between the local government to cover their costs. And then the majority of that funding comes to us to help with our Land Information Act initiatives. There is a council that is very similar to your council that just worked with the EMEA funding dollars. And so in that way, you guys are just like the EMEA Council that we also have. The next, the third largest funding source that we have is the IMLS dollars, which are the LSTA dollars that you all are probably very familiar with. This number is fairly inflated right now because of the ARPA dollars. We have had, we had a little over $2 million come to us for ARPA purposes, but it came to us through IMLS, so therefore they show up under these LSTA dollars here. So this number is really large right now. This is usually only about $1.2 million per year. But we have, we're very lucky to have so many dollars for ARPA right now. We should expect to see that go down in calendar year 2023, when those monies have to be expended. Another source of funding that's really important to us is our coal severance tax funding. That funding is divvied up to different, several different agencies at the state for specific purposes. Our average appropriation is usually between $500,000 and $600,000 per state fiscal year. That is dependent on the revenue that actually does come into this fund. For example, last year, we had close to $600,000 in appropriation, which just means the ability to spend cash in our accounts. However, the revenues were much lower, and so we had to make changes in the middle of the year as that. We didn't see that cash come in. So you can, so this number right here, though, is our appropriation amount and also the amount that we have budgeted to spend throughout this year. We watch this fund really closely to make sure that we see those dollars coming in. The same kind of philosophy applies to our Land Information Act dollars. But we typically, especially right now with the way real estate is working, we have seen more revenue coming in than actual appropriation that we have received. We also have the Montana Shared Catalog Fund, which is called a proprietary fund. I'm sure you all are really familiar with our shared catalog. This is a special type of fund that has lots of different restrictions on it, and it is, it is a revenue-based. So as you guys know, we charge the local libraries a small amount, and then we supplement that at our, at the State Library so that we can provide the shared catalog services to you all. That's just lined out in its own fund here, and I wanted to point that out. I won't go into too much more detail, but there's lots of little grant, this other category are just grant, or grants, or things that we, are smaller amounts, sometimes not ongoing. But I like to just group those all together because there's, there's not really a need to go into that kind of detail, unless you would like to, and, and then I'm happy to. That sounds like a fair amount. I'll just take a minute to breathe for a second because I know I was going through all that really quickly. Does anybody?
Melissa, is Digital Library Services, is that Montana Library to Go?
No, so that is actually, we call that, that fund is called that because the legislature wants it that way. But that is actually what we consider our pass-through money from other state agencies to provide the services that they need. So, so that is money that is coming from other agencies to cover costs. But that's a really good question, and we can add into the Library to Go piece a little bit more when we get into the LSTA funding. Okay.
This is Sean. I, I know Kara just wrote that hosting for Montana Library to Go comes out of LSTA funds. Where do the membership fees that come from libraries get coded in that revenue section?
Sean, we pay those directly to Overdrive, I'm pretty sure.
Oh.
So it probably doesn't show up on their budget at all. Is that right, Kara? I mean, I know the check we make goes to Overdrive. That's all.
Yeah, unlike Shared Catalog, which does come through our office, the, the Montana Library to Go member fees do not come through our office, so they're not reflected here.
Okay, thanks. I, I knew that, but I obviously needed a refresher that we're just paying for the content and not the hosting.
Let's see. So I want to sort of just walk you through the breakdown and how we get, how we track our work in a really detailed way. So the first chart I showed you have the work groups across the top. So here you can just, you can, this chart is just showing you the work groups by themselves so that you can get an idea for how big each work group is. And like I said, the work that you all do is mostly included within consulting and learning and statewide projects. And then there's a little bit of LSTA funding that goes into patron services for the Talking Book Library. So beyond our work groups, we, we need to track everything in a lot more detail. So in order for us to do that, we break out the work within each work group by what we call projects. Sorry for the scrolling. Okay, so this is where all the detail is. These are the projects that I was just mentioning. And so we, we, it is really imperative for us to be able to identify the costs of certain programs at a moment's notice. So while it's lots of extra work and not required by the state's accounting processes, we do track everything by these projects here. And also down to the account level, so what each project is being spent on specifically. This is really helpful for us when we have to make split decisions, quick decisions, whenever we need to be flexible and be able to move and change the way that we operate different programs. Or like, for example, when COVID happened, it's really easy for us to know, okay, this is how much this thing costs so we can make decisions based on that. We'll scroll, scroll down a little bit to consulting and learning and statewide projects, since that's important to you all. These are the different programs, I'm sorry, projects that we have within each work group for Org 13 and Org 14. On the, on the next topic I want to talk about, we'll go into LSTA 20 and 21 and what that means and those differences. But like I said, these materials are available to you if you all are interested in that kind of thing. We post these materials and we update them on, on close to a monthly basis. We are constantly monitoring the budget as we move throughout the year. Let me recover every funding.
Melissa, could you go back to the project budget, just really quickly? Thanks. Just wanted to point out that even though some of our codes might not be as familiar with you, some of these, the projects should sound very familiar to you because these are things like our trustee workshops. LLP stands for lifelong learning. That's Amelia and Oliver Programme. There's the economic development work that was recommended by the NAC for $3,000 funding for continuing education at the Directors Institute. That Network Advisory Council line item is our budget for this council to meet to help cover your, your travel costs, et cetera. You'll see down below, we have a project for the Courier. E-content, Jody, to your question, is the funding for Montana Library to Go to cover that hosting fee? As we had in your, at your last meeting, we had the LSTA five-year evaluation that we had to do. So that's funded here in this budget. The Montana Memory Project. You can see the Montana Shared Catalog has its own project. Again, that's the, the funding that the state provides to support the shared catalog under the statewide projects work group. And as Melissa said, there's another work group that's that proprietary account that has the, the funding that libraries contribute, OCLC, and so forth. So I, I hope that some of those projects look and sound familiar to you, and as we approve new projects, that's where those budgets and that information is recorded.
Okay. So I'd like to talk a little bit more in detail about the LSTA dollars. They are fairly nuanced. I've worked a lot with federal grants, and it's one of the more complicated, if not the most complicated, grant that I've worked on. I will... So this is when you all have recommendations for the work that needs to be done in the state. We go through a budgeting process, which I'm going to get into the timeline of that in just a little bit. But we break out those priorities by project. And so you can see those all listed here. So this is for LSTA 21, which is the grant that we are currently spending. And this is the budget that we have outlined based on your recommendations for each of these projects. And then we track this going forward throughout the year just to make sure that we are staying on track. It's been a little bit more challenging in the past couple of years because spending has been, we haven't been able to spend according to plan because of the pandemic, among other things. And so we monitor this really closely throughout the year so that we can, you know, fully utilize these funds in the, in the best way possible for the state. So if spending, if we aren't able to spend on a certain item because of COVID, for example, then we regroup Jenny and I, and I know Jenny works with her staff really closely to make sure that we are keeping up to date. And if something isn't happening or getting spent, then they're putting their heads together and looking at the next thing on the list of priorities that you all have given so that we can move that money out in a different way. So the LSTA awards are given to us on a two-year period. So I put together this little chart because it's very hard. I have to stop and think about it constantly, even though this is what I do all day long. So the LSTA awards that we get are given on a two-year period. And so they run on the federal fiscal year, which starts October 1st. And so you can see that we just finished spending, we had the ability to spend our LSTA $20 through September of 2021. We're currently in LSTA 21 period, which runs from October of 2020 to September 30th of 2022. So we are coming up on the deadline to have those funds spent. Then to make things more complicated, there's always, there is always two grants going at one time. So the LSTA 22 funds became, technically became available to us on October 21st. As you all know, they just recently passed the budget, so we're getting those numbers now. So we actually haven't been able to spend these dollars just yet. I think I heard Jenny mention that this is one of the latest announcements that she's seen. So that's really rare. Usually, we have the information much closer to the beginning of that grant period. So one of the things that I've been working on fixing is the fact that it's really challenging to track these LSTA funds when there are always two currently being expended. And so the way that we decided to do that is to align these two-year grants to one state fiscal year. So our new goal is to spend all of one year's LSTA within one state fiscal year. So you can see that state fiscal year starts on July 1st and runs through June 22nd. So our new goal and the way that we budget now is we, we include all of LSTA 21 and just spend it within this one fiscal year. So when we do that, that means that we are only spending one LSTA grant at a time, and it is always aligned with the state fiscal year, which has made it immensely easier to track and budget for. The, the budgeting part was really one of the most challenging pieces for me. The, the way that these, the, the way that the state fiscal years overlap with the federal fiscal years and audits, and it's, it was very complicated. So I, our new process is working really well, but I want to do all to understand the timelines and how the LSTA dollars are awarded to us. Let's see. Jenny, help me, help me remember if there's anything else you want me to say about LSTA. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, you go ahead.
I wanted to talk a little bit about overhead or administrative charges to the grant. We are, we actually currently have a federal indirect rate that's a little bit over 30%. So that means that our overhead expenses, the, the costs of our administration to run all of these programs is approximately 30% of our total budget. LSTA will not allow us to use a federal indirect rate. They cap the amount that we can spend on administrative costs at 4%. So that is really... So that is really, really minimal. It's really good for the work that the LSTA dollars does, because that means we can funnel more of that to the work. But it is hard for us to keep up with the administrative costs. So I just, I did want to point out that we do take forty, we do take four percent of the grant and use it to cover overhead costs. This year, it is almost fifty thousand dollars of the one point two million that was awarded to us to cover overhead costs. Anything else, Jenny, on LSTA? I think I've.
I guess I will just add a little bit more about sort of the, the the work of Congress to pass this budget. Because as, as skewed as the timeline is for us receiving and spending it, the actual budgeting process is equally skewed. So like Melissa said, even though we have the authority to be spending the most recent award back to last October, we just found out yesterday what that dollar amount is that we can spend. So we will be spending that award in this next fiscal year. The budget process to approve that amount actually started a year ago when President Biden announced his budget priorities, which Congress accepts or ignores, mostly largely ignores. And then Congress goes through the process of creating a budget and trying to pass a budget. And so that's really what we end up waiting for is, is Congress passing a federal fiscal year budget. I can't remember the last time they had a budget passed by October one. And like Melissa said, this is the latest that I remember. Usually it's somewhere in the November to January timeline to get our official award. So there's a lot of lobbying that goes on to try to encourage Congress to pass an award. The other thing about LSTA funds that you may be interested to know is that they are tied to federal legislation called the Museum and Library Services Act. And that's an act that authorizes the Institute of Museum and Library Services to award these funds to state libraries. It is a formula-based grant, so it's based on population. And when the Museum and Library Services Act was passed in twenty eighteen, it provided for a new base amount of funding to be allocated to all of the states. And then any additional amount that Congress appropriates on top of that base is split out on, on the per capita basis. The most recent base amount was about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And, and the appropriation for that base has inched up in the last couple of years since Congress reauthorized the Museum and Library Services Act. The fully appropriated base for all states under the newly authorized act is a million dollars. But Congress has yet to fully fund the act at that appropriated amount. So we're still not receiving that full base amount of funding. We were hoping to see that increase in our award this year. But with the budget that Congress passed this last week, they did not include that increase. They just approved the same amount of funding that's been approved last year, which was about one point two million. So we continue to work with our congressional delegation and the American Library Association and the chief officers of state library agencies and other organizations to lobby Congress to increase that funding. And, and when Congress approves a budget that the president signs that has those increases, that's when we see improvement in this budget.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit about the legislative cycle and how that relates to MSL's budgeting process and how that relates to the NAC and their work and the timing of LSTA funding. You all are in the process of finalizing your priorities right now. And so those will be incorporated in our budget planning process, which we are starting right now at the state library. There are not enough LSTA dollars to cover all of those priorities. So the state library does supplement those with other sources of funding. I would say the majority of that is general fund that we use. We also use some coal severance tax dollars to help supplement. And so Jenny and I work really closely together to make sure that we are prioritizing all of the work for the agency as a whole, but also incorporating the priorities that you all identify for the needs of the state. And so we are in the middle of that process right now. We are awaiting the work from you all so that we can finalize the budget and figure out how to split up the funding throughout our agency as a whole. It's my understanding that you all will finalize those priorities in April. At which point we will finalize our agency-wide budget and then take it forward to the commission for full approval. And then at that point, we input that final budget into our accounting system. This, this year is a little bit easier because we are not in the, we are not immediately following the legislative session. It gets more complicated when it's the summer after, the spring after a legislative session. So for those of you that aren't aware, the state works on what we call a biennial process, which means that we have legislative session every two years. Typically, most states have a legislative session every single year. There, I've heard a number of rumblings about why we do it every two years, but to be honest, I'm very, very thankful that we only do it every two years because it is cumbersome and stressful. And so I am happy that we only do this every two years. So we are we are currently in the twenty twenty-three biennium. We are getting ready. So even though the biennium won't end until June of twenty twenty-three, we are, are already in the process of starting the planning for the next biennium. And so the process, the part of the process that we're in right now is called the executive planning process. And so that is where we work with the governor's budget office to identify priorities for the agency and potential requests that we might put in for the next legislative session.
Melissa and Jenny, can you clarify for me, when we are setting priorities, is that for the state's fiscal year twenty-three, or is it for a broader period or more future period?
That's a great question. That, that's a great question. So when we right now, for example, we are in the process of gathering priorities from our councils and from staff, and we're having internal conversations. And those recommendations will go forward to the governor's budget office once they're approved by our commission, and that will be for the twenty twenty-five biennium. So the twenty twenty-five biennium will run from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
With regard to this next fiscal year, FY twenty-three, because that budget was set by the legislature last year, and as Melissa said, it's a biennium budget. The, the state budget is set. There's no new state monies. And because of the LSTA award announcement that we received this week, we also know now that there are no new LSTA dollars. So we, we're still having some discussions with the NAC at your meeting in April about what the FY twenty-three budget looks like. But largely, no, there's no new monies. So we're just really looking at any remaining dollars that might exist in FY twenty. Does that help?
It, it does help. And, and as far as revenue goes, when we're looking to twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, we can be hopeful, maybe there would be more LSTA funds, or I mean, the general fund, all, everything could be brighter. How do you guesstimate future revenues?
So there's, I'll, I'll, I'll give my answer. Melissa may have a slightly different answer. With regard to LSTA, I think it's safest for us to budget level funding. So basically, the estimating the revenue will be the same as it is year over year. And we won't actually budget anything more than that until we know the revenue is coming in. So in all of our planning for FY twenty-three to date, we've assumed level funding, and we were hopeful that more money would come in. Now we know it's not. So that's disappointing. With regard to future sessions, the, both the governor's budget office and the Legislative Fiscal Division do a lot of revenue estimating. We are less concerned about the amount of revenue when we're making our budget requests. We put forward the requests that we need through the legislative process. Obviously, with coal funding, for example, we're not going to make an exorbitant request that we know would be beyond what coal revenue typically is. But if we are going to make a, a general fund request, we, we largely know that the state could choose the fund that if they wanted to, depending on their priorities. So we're less concerned about the revenue in that regard. That isn't to say that you know, in the next several months, we're going to start seeing revenue projections and we know right now that, that they're very positive. In other years, revenue projections are very negative, and we might get word from the governor's office that there isn't any money for new proposals. And so in that case, we may not make any kind of new proposals. But in terms of our requests to the legislature, we're less concerned about the revenue. And, and once that appropriation is made by the legislature, with the exception of the coal money, that amount is largely set for us to budget. Is that fair, Melissa? Is that a fair way to describe it?
That's a, that's a fair way to describe it. Only thing I would add is that if additional funding is awarded, we are, we have the ability to spend that, even though we're in the middle of an existing biennium. There's a process that we can go through with the budget office so that if more funding is awarded or if new funding is awarded to us outside of the state funding sources, then we are, we do have the ability to go through a special process with the budget office and get that added in, in the middle of a biennium.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
And, and Jody, I would add that that's part of the reason why I think it's really important for our core service committees and the NAC to not restrict themselves to the budget when we're thinking about what we want these programs and services to look like. Because you, you know, we know resources are going to be constrained. We know we're going to have ideas and hopes beyond what we can afford. But if we know what those kinds of programs might cost, it gives us the ability to make those asks and to plan for what, what future programs we might want to look at or seek grant funds or work with the trust to try to fund those kinds of priorities. So there's opportunity for us to think big, recognizing that we're not going to get everything that we ask for.
But we should ask.
We should ask.
We should ask. You should always ask.
So really, we can start with priorities and then kind of look at what cost would be and as a kind of second process.
Yeah.
Okay. My other question was, you mentioned that LSTA is population-based, and I certainly feel like Montana has seen a real population boost in this last year especially. Do they come up with their population numbers just on census data? Is it static, pretty static? Or does it reflect actual population growth?
It, it does reflect population gross, growth over the biennium, or I'm sorry, over the, the decennial period. So the most recent population award is based on the decennial census. And then I don't know if they use American Community Survey numbers or what, but they do increase that, that population amount each year.
Great, because I feel like a lot of growth happened after the decennial census count was taken, and I was hoping we wouldn't be stuck with that for ten years.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to wrap up by telling you where we are in the, in the process for the twenty twenty-five biennium. So like I said, we're in what we call the executive planning process right now, which is where we work with the governor's budget office to plan a base budget and get that finalized. And that is in statute that that has to be completed and turned into legislative staff by, I think it's September is the first date, and then more detail has to be provided by November and December. Those are hard dates. The legislative session starts in January of this next year. And that will run through the beginning of May, very likely. Once that process, once the legislative process is done, and there's a final vote on the budget, then we go through what is called turnaround process, which happens over summer and year end. And that is where we take what the appropriations that are given to us and we input those into the state's accounting system. And then we are ready to go for another two years. I think that those are the things that I wanted to talk about. Jenny, did I miss anything that you wanted me to say?
Nope. So on your April agenda, we'll look at the FY twenty-three budget. The, the sad news is there really are, are no new monies. But I think, you know, we still want to have a conversation about what the projects are in, in FY twenty-three. And then we will have a discussion about what kinds of executive planning process budget items that the NAC wants to see the state library support for the next legislative session. And your recommendations will then go to the State Library Commission at their April fourteenth mission meeting. And we hope that they will take action to approve our budget request, request, at least our preliminary budget requests at that meeting. Because then there's a, some submission processes that we go through with the governor's budget process, starting in May and June. I think that we talked about it your last meeting, the fact that the Montana Library Association is discussing a fairly major increase under the umbrella of state funding that would provide funding for a variety of e-resources, including Montana Library to Go and, and various statewide databases and the Montana Memory Project. It would include funding for Montana Shared Catalogue, the Courier, the Hot Spot Program, et cetera. And so one of the discussions we can have at the Network Advisory Council is whether or not we want to more formally endorse MLA's request and what, if anything, beyond that the state library might want to support itself.
And Jenny, the, um, the trust for public libraries, or I'm sure I'm getting that name wrong. What are the plans for that? And how do you see those funds being spent? Would they come into the state library and then be spent out, or would they would they fund projects themselves?
Right now, they're funding projects themselves. So far, they've contributed grant funds to the Hot Spot Program. So they're, they're funding kind of kind of what I would characterize as more one-time costs. They're also applying for grant funds to help support the internal wiring project that we're supporting with ARPA dollars. So any requests that we might make of the trust to help us fundraise for particular projects would flow through the state library to help support those projects. Did you have a long-term goal of raising a corpus of funds that would provide more direct funding for some of these larger statewide projects? But, but they're not yet there yet. So at this point, they're primarily grant funds that are funding and at one-time programs. Melissa, thank you. That was really, really informative. Thank you all for taking the time to join us today. I hope this gives you a little bit more context for the discussions that we'll continue to have around planning for our budget and planning for legislative priorities. And we have the, the calendar that we're working with that lays out this kind of biennial process that we work through. So as we become more familiar with the, the budgeting process, I know this will become more familiar to all of you. Thanks so much for taking the time to join us.
Nice to meet all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Have a good day, everybody.
Have a great, great day, great weekend.
Thank you, guys, that was awesome.
Glad it was helpful.